Good evening. We'll call the April 2nd, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. If you will, I'll rise for invocation.
Bow with me, please. Most gracious Father in heaven, we come before thee tonight to ask your blessings upon this meeting. We ask that you will give us the wisdom and provide the guidance that we need to go forward and do what's best for the children. We ask that you will grant peace and harmony in all that we do where our children and our teachers are concerned, for it's in Jesus' name. Amen.
And to lead us to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Order, colors. Right, face. Trail, colors. Forward, arms.
Thank you. Our first public address tonight is Ms. Jennifer Watkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Watkins. My family lives in Magnolia Greens. I'm a Belleville parent, parent advisory council member and volunteer. First, I want to talk about communication channels between the board and parents. Back in October of last year, I called then-Chairman Miller to discuss the need for the countywide PAC meetings. Those meetings were eliminated effective with the 2018-2019 school year. I told him that as elected officials, the school board should be looking to increase communication channels with parents, not eliminating communication channels completely. He and I both agreed that the meetings were not as effective as they could be. I encouraged him to look at improving the meeting format instead of eliminating the meetings completely. Fast forward to January, there were still no scheduled countywide PAC meetings on the schedule. We had a new chairperson elected, Chairperson Cook, so I picked up the phone and gave her a call. I reiterated what I told Mr. Miller, and Chairperson Cook told me that the countywide PAC meetings would not resume. She told me that if I or other parents had concerns and wanted to have a dialogue with school board members, that we should attend the committee meetings. So the first thing I did was go online and do a little bit of research about the committee meetings. I found that the committee meeting agendas are not available online. They are, what I've been told, is that the agendas for these meetings are fluid up until a day or two before the meeting, and that the time is not set in stone either until a day or two before the meeting. So these facts alone make it next to impossible for any parent to plan in advance to attend those meetings. The countywide PAC meetings were the only transparent two-way dialogue available between the school board and parents. I think the redistricting input meetings reiterated the need to improve communications between our board and parents. And I did want to talk a little bit as well about the redistricting meetings because I think it's important. What I heard parents say was, we would like a transparent process using a guiding set of principles that is developed with parental input and communicated with enough time for planning. What we didn't hear parents say, and I think that's just as important as what we did hear parents say, we did not hear parents say, we are opposed to redistricting efforts to reduce or eliminate overcrowding at Belleville Elementary. I personally was frustrated with the input meetings. I was expecting to go in there and be sold, to be sold on the idea of why this was important, to have data to look at. And after the meetings, I did a little research, and looking at the bond data, North Brunswick High School is projected to have over 1,500 students in five years. Phew, that gives me a little bit of concern. And I'm also hearing that Belleville is projected to have 1,050 students in three years when the capacity is 708 students. So we're looking at 50% overcapacity. I think that parents need to know this. They need to have access to the relevant data. We were coming to these meetings with an opinion about something that we really weren't completely informed about. So again, here's what I'm asking of the board today. Let's work together to restructure and restart the county PAC meetings, or let's investigate an alternative communication channel where we can work together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Ms. Emily Donovan.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I also am very grateful that we paused and that you also allowed there to be a pause on redistricting. I think I echo what Ms. Watkins says with the concerns regarding the two-way communication. We did, Belleville PAC did invite Mr. Betten to a PAC meeting, and we just didn't feel that that was effective enough. We've thought about inviting Dr. Oats to PAC meetings and then realized that might show favoritism because he has 19 schools that he needs to communicate with. And so this idea of a countywide PAC where we can have more communication really was positive, and in the aspects of redistricting, we do think that that is a meaningful way to continue conversations, so that when information is shared, it's shared accurately. Would also like to point out that there was a couple of things that came up from the redistricting that we would like to maybe get additional answers on, and maybe a timeline for that information. When you move into the conversation, will we have what sort of notice for that type of, for redistricting conversations? I know today I turned the news on, and I saw that New Hanover County had a public notice that elementary schools could attend a school board meeting to follow along. That type of dialogue with the media would be fantastic, so that all members of the community can see that. I know that the New Hanover County Board issued a calendar to let parents know almost a year in advance when meetings would happen, when workshops would take place that they could sit in on. We really would like to see that sort of information shared with us and shared with us sooner rather than later. So if that process could start now, we would really appreciate it. We also understand that address audits were a concern for some parents and wanted to find out if the school board will be doing an address audit. Will the school board be looking at transfers and accepting transfers? I know at Belleville, our principal does not allow transfers. If they come through, he immediately denies them based on school capacity, but the transfers get overwritten for various reasons. When we are, when we have an overcrowded school, is there a means that we can put in place to safeguard that? I think on average, for instance, 10 to 15 this year alone have come from charter day schools. One thing that concerns us as parents is, again, we're crowded, but then also if those transfers are coming after the 20-day mark, that's a lot of money that stays with that school that doesn't follow Belleville. And 10 to 15, that's roughly, what, $100,000 to $150,000 that are going to charter day, but the students aren't there? That's concerning to parents, and that's concerning to parents because that's a lot of money, and we could do a lot of stuff at Belleville with that money. So we'd like to have possibly that addressed when we're moving forward. Other concerns is working with county commissioners. We did, Ms. Watkins and I, we met with our commissioner last week, and we were told that there isn't a proposal yet for rebuilding, or for not rebuilding, I'm sorry, for constructing a new elementary school in our area, and that is of concern. We know that it takes probably at best three to five years to build a new school, so that's a long lead time if we don't have a proposal on the table from our county commissioners. So we would love to maybe see a little more communication from parents to let us know about that. Again, I really appreciate all that you do, and I agree with you, Ms. Milligan, and I do trust that you do have the best interest of our students, and I know all of you do. I greatly appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Donovan, we will work on that, all those things, and just the issue with the money going the 20-day count, that has been a longstanding issue with, if I'm not mistaken, it's a state issue. So it's not a local issue, but that money's, the money is to go with the child. So that money would not necessarily be money coming into your school, but it'll be money coming into the school system to pay the teachers and all that, because that's what that money, the allotment for those children are. So just to clarify a little bit, but yes, that is a concern. So, but thank you. All right, and now we have lots of wonderful accomplishments to speak about tonight, and we're going to come down there with you, if that's all right.
Yeah, we'll just come down. Because this is a supercharged success in our school's little segment we're going to do. We're going to start off with some big announcements involving some of our students who are going to governor's school. So if I could get Ms. Connie Ennis, Director of Fine Arts, to come join me as well up here. For a little rundown, because it is such an accomplishment. These students are going to be attending North Carolina's Governor's School Residency Program this summer. The North Carolina Governor's School is considered the most respected leadership, academic, and artistic residency program for talented high school students in our county, and we are so proud of these students and their accomplishments. First up, Emma Babson of Early College High School. Are you here this evening? Emma. All right, Emma will be attending High Point University in Choral Music. Emma, come on up here. Accept the certificate on our behalf, and I'd like for you to join me over here. Emma, thank you so much. Next up, we have Brayden Williams of South Brunswick High School. He will be attending Meredith College in Raleigh in Natural Science. Brayden. All right, Brayden, head this way. Next up, from West Brunswick High School, we have Isley Sharp. She will be attending Meredith College in Raleigh in Dance, and her family knows something about dance. Very good. Daughter of one of our previous county Teachers of the Year, Ms. Sharp. Benicio Castales of West Brunswick High School is headed to High Point University, where he will be dealing with social science. And then we have Mason Hahn of West Brunswick High School. He could not make it tonight, but we have Sheila Sheets, the school counselor over at West Brunswick, accepting the certificate and honor in his honor. He will be attending High Point University in Natural Science. And students, well done, well done. Okay, we have another group, I don't believe they were able to join us, but I want to give them an extreme shout-out. If they did make it, y'all holler my name. But 2,500 students entered to have their drawings be one of 13 featured in the 2019-2020 NC Farm-to-School Calendar that's sponsored by the State of North Carolina. So five finalists out of those 2,500 came from Brunswick County Schools, all of them at Jesse Mae Monroe Elementary. Imagine that, right? Two of those, two out of 2,500 are going to be in that calendar. That calendar's going to be spread around Brunswick County Schools as well. We're going to get a lot of copies of those, and that would be 5th graders Charles Sherman and 5th grader Teagan Cossey. They're traveling to Raleigh in May to accept the awards on behalf of Brunswick County Schools. So that's a big one. Next up, I'm Dr. Oats. I'm going to need your help.
If you could hold this for me real quick. So we have right here, this is going to be 14. Okay, so this is only a 14. Okay, go ahead and drop that. Drop it right. So stand where you are. Stand where you are. Because you're, I know it's a 14. Okay? Okay? So that's 14. We need an additional 10. I'm still going. Oh, it's right here. It's 24 feet from Dr. Oats to me. We have a national champion in the chambers tonight. He jumped more than 24 feet at the national championships. So imagine, we need Dr. Oats in the air.
Okay, so I wanted to put it in perspective just how big of a deal this is. Your national champion in the boys' long jump at the New Balance Indoor Championships in New York City, North Brunswick High School's Jaime Bullock. His jump of 24 feet, 4.25 inches, wowed the country. When I broke out that tape measure back in the office, just to kind of see what, that's when I first got the perspective, that is just, it's unbelievable. I mean, that is unbelievable. Okay, finally, our child nutrition department and cafeteria crews at all of our schools, this is something they're no stranger to, and each year they do it, it's a massive accomplishment. They just received the Golden A Award. That's no shocker, they received it last year. This is something they are just good at. This award is given to food establishments that have scored a 95 or higher on their health inspection for five consecutive years. We're beyond five consecutive years. So, I mean, they need to, we could kind of call it the Platinum A Award, but it is officially called the Golden A Award. I'd like to invite our child nutrition department and some of our cafeteria crews who could make it out here tonight to join us.
Not sure. It may be easiest to have, yes.
So let me get Robert's here. Let me get everybody. We're going to have the biggest photo office. That's a good-looking photo right there, y'all. And the ringleader of the whole.
All right. Come this way. In three, two, one. One, three, two, one. All right. 95% or higher.
Board members, thank y'all. Superintendent.
All right, and now we have a presentation. Ms. Pat Sykes.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
And superintendent, and the citizens. I appreciate y'all being here. I'm Pat Sykes. I'm here as a citizen tonight, wanting to present to you, and thank you for allowing me to come. My assistant here is with the Foundation Forward, and his name is Mike Unrued, and he's a board member of the foundation. And we're going to give you a presentation of what our charters of freedom are and what will be taking place, and then I'll have a couple of other things. The booklets I give you has a lot of stuff in there. One of it is your citizenship test, sort of. It's got a few other questions. So you're welcome to take that test and give it back to me if you like, and I'll grade you. Or I can ask you here, but I didn't want to embarrass anybody. But you might do really good on it. So I'm going to start the video.
Foundation Forward, where history meets the future. We are blessed to live in the greatest civilization in the history of the world. We are richer in wealth, health, philanthropy, and culture than ever before. Groundbreaking advancements happen daily. We have more personal freedoms. Our citizens have more opportunities than ever imagined. We go where no one has gone before, and we enjoy an unprecedented personal quality of life. It truly is a wonderful time to be alive in the United States of America, and the future for our children has never looked brighter. We owe much to our founding fathers and their great foresight. Struggling with a tyrannical, oppressive government of the colonial British Empire, our forefathers rebelled, revolted, and then fought a war, all while setting up a fledgling government that would still be in place over 230 years later. Taxation without representation brought about the Boston Tea Party. Paul Revere rides to warn the colonists about the British Army moving out of Boston toward Concord, New Hampshire in pursuit of patriot leaders. The fighting of the Revolutionary War begins at Concord. The Declaration of Independence is approved, severing the colonies' political ties to Great Britain and explaining to the world the reasons why. General Washington crosses the Delaware River to surprise and defeat the British and Hessians in Trenton, New Jersey. U.S. General Gates defeats British General Burgoyne at Saratoga. This was the turning point of the war. General Washington defeats the British at Yorktown, and the fighting of the Revolutionary War ends. The Paris Peace Treaty is signed, and the Revolutionary War ends. The United States Constitution is ratified. George Washington is sworn in as the first president of the United States of America. The Bill of Rights is ratified, and our United States Democratic Republic is established. This democratic model has been so successful, it has been the format for nearly 60% of the countries around the world. The Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, these three founding documents are known as our charters of freedom. The original documents are on display in the rotunda of the National Archives in Washington, D.C. Those who are fortunate enough and have the time can see their charters of freedom in Washington, D.C. However, most will never see these original documents. Vance and Mary Jo Patterson took that experience and in January 2013, set up Foundation Forward, an educational nonprofit.
From the beginning, this has been an educational project. Our founding fathers believed that in order to have a free and independent country, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. And that's the purpose of Foundation Forward, to educate our students and preserve the history of our country, of our founding fathers, the story behind these founding documents, and what it took to bring these amazing ideals to reality. There are 3,142 counties, boroughs, parishes, independent cities, census zones, and the District of Columbia in the United States. Our goal as a foundation is to place charters of freedom settings in as many of those communities as possible over the next 10 years. Once these settings are in place, we don't just leave. We begin our community outreach and other meaningful educational projects. Imagine, if you will, teachers bringing their 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students on annual field trips to their charters of freedom settings, where they'll spend time learning about the founding documents, about the founding fathers, they'll learn how government is meant to operate, and about their state and local government, and local heroes. In addition, we've begun producing a Broadway-quality production of 1776 the Musical, taking it into communities, offering as a gift to the students. Last year, we invited the entire school system in Charlotte, North Carolina, free of charge from Foundation Forward, and we had over 1,100 tickets disappear overnight. It was an incredible performance, but what really struck home was towards the end of the play, when the representative from Georgia was on stage. He walked over and slid Georgia's name over to vote for the Declaration of Independence. The kids just went crazy, and it was at that moment I knew that these kids had actually taken ownership of their American history, perhaps for the first time in their lives. And it was an incredible feeling, an amazing experience for all involved. Our hope is they took that experience back to their classrooms for in-depth discussions, and that they took it home and told their families about it, to make their families want to go down to their charters of freedom settings, creating a life experience, sharing that feeling, and their new appreciation for American history. It's through these efforts, by placing these documents in permanent proper setting in local communities across our country, combined with the meaningful civic education programs, the site visits, and the Broadway-quality production of 1776, that we believe we are helping to preserve the history of our country, the democratic form of our republic, so that future generations will have and understand the rights and liberties our founding fathers intended. Our hope is that our future leaders will come from communities where they have their own charters of freedom settings, that your children will no longer grow up talking about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington, but they'll be talking about their Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with right in their home community.
After one visit, these grade school children will know more about our history and government than most of the people in the United States. If your community is fortunate enough to have been selected to receive a gift of a charters of freedom setting, then that means the funding is in place, funding that involves no tax dollars. Foundation Forward, an educational nonprofit, where history meets the future.
And I guess that is the question. Are you ready to be a part of it? Several years ago, our county commissioners came together and decided that this would be a great project for our county, and it's not party-related, it's for the citizens. And one of the things is the kids being able to come to our courthouse and see how government works. I think it'd be very educational, it's an educational program. And the drama production that you saw on the screen, we are bringing it to Odell Williamson Auditorium for our students, hopefully this fall, free of charge. In fact, the performance will be performed in Falian Hall April the 13th and 14th, I think, if any citizens want to. if any citizens want to go to that performance there. But we will have it at Odell this fall for the students. So we're hoping that the school system's gonna be on board to meet with our president of the college and get a date scheduled. The other thing is, besides the drama, when we do the charters of freedom, there's also a time capsule. And that means different things will go in that capsule. You might be able to tell them more about the capsule.
So there's a safe that is built into each of our settings. And about six months after our dedication ceremony, a time capsule will be sealed in that safe. That six-month period gives people an opportunity to donate to the program. It gives all of the officials in the county a chance to return our letters that we asked them to write about the state of their community and their feelings towards the charters of freedom setting. It also allows us to collect memorabilia from around the county, take photos depicting the county the way it is now. These time capsules will be opened on September 17th, 2087, which is the 300th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution. And so we may not all be around to participate in that, but our children, our grandchildren, great-grandchildren, will be able to be part of that ceremony and say, "My ancestors or my family were involved in this process." And the... One more thing with the time capsule is the legacy paver program. Would you like me to go ahead?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. In front of the setting, there's going to be a 6-by-12 area on the ground where blank bricks are going to be installed. And we're working on the title for this, but something like the Field of Honor or Freedom Walk, something like that. But businesses and individuals around the community can purchase one of these legacy pavers. There are some that you can order that have an insignia on them to honor and remember veterans or first responders, so you could dedicate it to a loved one as well. Everyone who donates to this process, whether it be $1 out of a piggy bank or a $1,000 corporate donation, gets their name put into the time capsule to be read off during that tricentennial ceremony. So that's all about the time capsule and the pavers.
One thing, I would love to send an award for tonight for the history students, somebody in history. So this would be a good opportunity to move history forward. And if you want to, it's up to the history teachers. If the history classes, civic and history teachers, would like to do, have their students do an essay, they can turn them in to me, and we will grade those essays. Not a grade, but we'll look at them and pick a winner to come to our gala on April the 30th. So, and we appreciate, if there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer any of them if you have any. We appreciate y'all giving us the time to present this to you, to show you how it is about our education. And I look forward for our county having these settings.
Thank you. Pat, can I ask a question? Where is this going to be located?
The settings will be...
You want to tell us where it's going to be located?
The settings will be in the, in front of the courthouse.
All right. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Dixon, our digital learning update. I need all the updating I can get with that.
Hi.
Hello.
Usually we do this at committee, and I do apologize for being unable to be at the last committee meeting. I had an emergency come up with the family. So we decided we'd take a little time and give a broader perspective to everyone involved. So this is the digital learning update, just to catch everyone up to speed on where we are moving forward with the one-to-one project and several other things. Current device status. The current status of the devices are the column closest to the school names. If you can see the projection, and you'll see that we're about 2/3 to one-to-one currently as we stand at this moment. Some of you have seen some of these numbers before. The next two columns are the projections for the upcoming school year. So the center-colored column is the projection for, from July 1 to September 1. We'll roll out those additional devices, bringing us to about 83% across the county as far as one-to-one with Chromebooks and then the iPads in some early elementary classes. The goal is that by the time we open school in the 2020 school year, we'll be 100% across all of our schools. So a device for every child in every building, okay? The projected dollar amounts are there. It's not that far outside what we usually use for new technology. There's a little bit more in place there for the next two years, but it puts us on a rolling cycle where we can continue to maintain that replacement without expanding our budgets that we spend annually anyway in the five-year replacement cycle, okay? In addition to the one-to-one devices, we're looking at what we're doing to improve the classroom experience and how we use these devices in the classroom. We've begun the digital learning walkthroughs, where we're working with five volunteer schools and their school administration to do walkthroughs where we visit each classroom and determine how and if technology's being used in those classrooms. Currently, we have about 370 data points across those schools, working with those admin. And then working together, we're looking at student usage and teacher usage from a substitution level, where it's just substituting for the tools we've already had in place, to a transformative level, where it's actually transforming the education in the classroom. The data indicates we've got little transformative usage right at the moment, but we're working with those five schools to set their goals and to develop a plan for each of those buildings across the board. We'll roll out to the rest of the schools next school year. Those were our five pilot schools. They are, just so you'll know, Waukama, West Brunswick, South Brunswick High School, South Brunswick Middle School, and Virginia Williamson Elementary. Just for data usage, we've got the Chromebook usage. This just shows over a 28-day period. You can see the usage in each building. That's unique users. So 97% of Leland Middle School users, students, in a month have used the technology in some sort of way. If we look at how, you can see the apps that we use on the regular basis, whether it's iReady, Reflex, vocabulary, MobiMax, all those in-classroom apps. What we're really looking at with the administrative staff and the walkthroughs and visiting the classrooms is how they're using these apps to develop the educational structure within the classroom. Yes, Mr. Lemon?
A question relates to high school usage being very low.
Yep.
What's the answer to that?
The answer to that is it takes a lot to move high school teachers out of their comfort zone. So we are gradually working on that. If you'll notice, we also have lower actual numbers, device, the device percentages are lower in the high schools as well than in the elementaries and the middle schools. And that's just based on the number of students and what they put their money previously towards as far as building in devices. We, the goal is to equalize that across the board over the next two years.
Is there a specialized effort to change that?
To change the allotment or the teaching?
The teaching.
The teaching? There is. We're, like I said, we're working with West Brunswick right now specifically. I've got professional development scheduled that I'm delivering independently with each grade level in two weeks. We're also developing with each school their personalized plan on how we're going to address that within the buildings. But through professional development, through administrative support, and those types of things as well.
I realize high school teachers are hard to change because they're used to direct instruction.
There is that direct instruction model.
Just asking.
Yep. We're looking at each one independently.
I was gonna ask you, the, I didn't see the new middle school on there for next, for two years out?
So it's based on student numbers.
Okay.
So when we move students, we move devices.
Okay, and Leland Middle had the lowest percentage, or one of the lowest, but has the highest usage by far? Is that, is that going to be equalized quickly?
It will be.
Okay.
We'll divide their numbers. So basically, the goal is for this year to take whatever we're missing in each building to get to 100%, divide it in half. So they'll go halfway up to 100% this year, and then finish it out the next.
Okay, not based off usage?
Not right. Correct. Okay? The next one includes our professional development efforts. We do have the team of instructional technology facilitators working with each school. We're also developing their strengths as well. They're attending Coaching University and things like that with the instructional coaches to develop their own skills. They're co-designing lessons that use the resources to engage the students, providing opportunities for the staff to learn, developing personalized differentiated opportunities for the staff, coaching and modeling and mentoring, and then also, again, working with that school administration to design independent SMART goals for each building and address the needs within each individual building. Because the needs in each building is slightly different of what they need and how we need to address that. Specific professional development we have in the works, either ongoing or upcoming, includes the Google certification opportunities. I don't know if you've seen my email, but we are offering Google certification opportunities for every teacher in the county. We will pay for their assessments for those. Dr. Oats, I should have shown the video, issued a challenge to the staff. He has received his Level 1 Google certification, and so he issued a challenge to the staff based on that for them to do that. We also have some rewards in place for the schools that reach the highest percentages and things of that nature. The one, one bite at a time microunits continue. If you remember, we launched those about a year ago. We've had over 900 submissions at this point, and awarded over 139 hours of CEUs using those. Those are those online microunits that address the tools and not necessarily the integration, but get that tool usage out of the way so that the people can work with them on their integration. Teacher Tech Camp is upcoming on June 4, 5, and 6. We're gonna focus on current resources, enhancing that instruction, using those embedded in the integration in the classroom. Focus on understanding the scope and sequence, that technology scope and sequence we have in place. So developing professional development targeted to that. And then we have code.org coming in to do a full-day training and additional coding, training on coding in the core content areas, as well as we're doing school admin support and planning training. I have a professor scheduled on the calendar for Thursday for the principal's meeting to do about 45 minutes to an hour with them on personalized learning, and that's sort of what it looks like in their building and what they're seeing in their classrooms.
Thank you for the coding effort.
We've done coding for, every year for several years. It's just, and we've had long conversations about that. It's getting it embedded in the core curriculum so that they're willing to dedicate the time to it. Just, I wouldn't be me if I didn't mention our digital library. We're about to break 10,000 circulations since its implementation, the first week in January. I'm excited about that. We've had a lot of books circulated and just over 1,700 users of that. The schools are working on what they're going to put in their, in their personal collections as well, and will continue to grow the district's collection. That Pete the Cat, I've had to re-up him twice already. I've had to buy him three times. Upcoming resources, we're looking at launching in addition to the things that we already have under contract and under long-term contracts. We're gonna do scholastic news across the board so we can make sure that all schools get equitable and the same grade levels get access to those. So we're gonna start funding that from the district level, we hope. Storyworks, the same thing. Studies Weekly to provide social studies weekly for 4th and 5th grade, again, across the county. And then Newsela Pro in the LA classroom, which allows us to differentiate news and reading pieces for the middle school and provide them a differentiated assessment experience with those as well. Any other questions?
Necessarily a question, Ms. Dixon, but if you could, could you just, for our audience, give an example of what transformative usage of technology would be as opposed to being a substitute?
Absolutely. So we have a scale. We use what's called the SAMR model. I did not include that in here. It includes four levels of technology usage. I don't know which way I need to face for this. It begins with substitution, which is strictly doing the same task, but substituting an electronic device for it. So they're reading off of the screen, but doing nothing else. It moves up to transformative, which is four levels beyond that. Transformative is where students are truly creating things they could never create otherwise. When you think about those virtual reality field trips and those kind of things, that's transformative use in the classroom. Where you see students creating their own video products and those kind of things, that's transformative use in the classroom. Okay? And we have all the tools to make it happen. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, Ms. Harrington, the teacher's voice.
Yes, Dr. Oats, I have my voice back. Thank you. The first thing I wanted to address is teacher workdays. The TAC team voted on some teacher workdays. We know emergencies happen, and we know that workdays, sometimes they have to be taken away, and kids have to, have to come to school. We know they have to meet a certain requirement of hours. However, if we do, hopefully not, but if we do have a major hurricane like this year, we kind of put in, in order which ones we'd like you to protect, if that is possible, which ones we'd like you to protect. Because through our discussions about workdays, it comes up quite often in our TAC meetings. Without workdays, you see more teacher burnout. You see teachers, teacher attendance going down, and all of that trickles down to the students. So we, Ms. White has worked very hard on this schedule and has tried to get us workdays that have, fall right behind the end of the nine weeks, which is very helpful, especially for high schools that are rescheduling. So on the calendar I've given you, we have, the first one that was, that was rated highest was March 20th. That is because that workday aligns with the early college training and could enhance collaboration between those schools, as well as interventions and review for testing. The next one that we have is February 28th. That one was second, or 26th. Is it 26th or 28th?
28.
Sorry, that was a misprint. It gives us an opportunity for professional development. And then the last one is January 3rd. That was especially for the high schools for switching semesters so that they have time to get those schedules together, to make sure the students have an organized schedule before they hit school and, and go to their classrooms. And then the bonus one was October 21st, just to kind of spread out some of the workdays. And that one, if, if the early release day had to be, and the conferences had to be taken away, we could use that workday to maybe conference with some, with some parents as well at the beginning of the year. So I'd like to submit this to you. Hopefully, if, hopefully we won't have any major weather problems next year, but if we do, just keep these dates in mind for, for the teachers. We were trying to be proactive. I know those decisions have to be made quickly, so thank you for that. Next, I'd like to talk about the Honored Educator Scholarship. I just, last week, got back from NCAT, which is the North Carolina Center for Advancement of Teachers. I learned, I learned a lot and came back very energized and enthusiastic about teaching. I went to this STEMify, STEMify your classroom and learned, I actually thought I was doing all right in STEM until I went here and realized there's so much more you can do. So if you don't know, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. And a lot of people add STEAM to that, to add the arts into, into STEM, because they are creating, and they are doing so much more than, than what we really thought STEM was. It interleaves the disciplines of science. It's not just activities that you, that you do with, with tools, like, like Acacia was saying. It's not just using the tools. It's using them to enhance creative thinking, problem-solving, and creativity, increasing their creativity. So I'm, I am really looking forward to sharing what I've learned with my school, with the teachers in my school, with my kids especially, and even with the county if that opportunity arises. Brunswick County is one of many counties that show their belief in teachers, teacher, and teacher development, and had this scholarship available. And you are, by offering this, moving mountains, because yes, we had a 2.6 earthquake while we were up there. So we, we'd like to say that we were moving mountains while we were there. And I do appreciate you continuing this scholarship. And just realized that some of the, the NCAT money that has been set aside is not using because teachers don't know about NCAT, which was surprising to me. So I'm gonna make sure that, that is, that knowledge is spread to all teachers in the county at our next TAC meeting, so that that will be utilized fully. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the meeting agenda.
Madam Chairman, I would like, in the area of discussion, to add three items for discussion, please. One being board communications. Number, the second one, committee meetings.
And the third one, redistricting.
No action expected, just some discussion. It's all right?
Committee meetings.
Committee meetings, redistricting. All three of them brief.
So with those things added to the discussion, number three being the board communications, four being committee meetings, and five being redistricting, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Lemon, Mr. Miller, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have the March 5th, 2019 regular meeting, the March 19th, 2019 Operations Committee, March 19th, 2019 Curriculum Policy Committee, March 19th, 2019 Budget Work Session, March 25th, 2019 Special Called Meeting, and March 26th, 2019 Special Called Meeting. I hear a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Here I make the motion that we approve the minutes as listed.
All right. And Mr. Lemon was second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the action items for approval. The design builder approval for the artificial turf project. And Mr. Eckhart.
Yes. At the February meeting, Ms. Rutledge came before the board, and she discussed the benefits, the good and the bad about artificial turf, and she discussed the cost savings or minimal costs to go with the installation of the artificial turf versus natural turf. One of the main reasons being the multi-sport usage of the fields and how that degrades the natural turf. And so that was her discussion, and she was given approval to move forward and investigate and get some firms to submit statements of qualifications. We did put out a request for qualifications, and we did receive six statements of qualifications from various firms. At that same time, we rounded up the athletic directors, and they were taken to three different schools. Ms. Rutledge went to another one, Gardner-Webb, and Larry Smith went to Fort Mill, just to look at the existing surfaces, talk to the athletic directors at those facilities, and gain understanding as to, you know, what's good and what's bad from them. We convened a group of people, the athletic directors, an engineer from McGill Associates, and four staff members, and we reviewed those statements of qualifications and selected two firms to interview. One was ProForm Sports, and the other one was Astroturf. We did interview those firms, and after discussion, we selected ProForm Sports to recommend to the board to enter into negotiations for scope and for cost. We decided, and I don't know if Ms. Rutledge presented this, but we decided to go with a design-build-delivery method. The reason for the design-build-delivery method is, number one, it cut time, and we're trying to get this done before football season starts. And as big a reason, it created a single point of responsibility. The other method, design-bid-build, we would have had a civil engineer, a sports engineer, go and do the design, and then a firm would have come in, and they would have based, they would have based their field design on what the architect, engineer came up with. If anything happened in regards to the field's performance in the future, you always had a scenario where there would be finger pointing. So going with a design-build scenario, we do not have that possibility. So that was the thinking behind that. We would like, we would like the board to allow us to begin to negotiate with ProForm Sports, and if those negotiations hit a wall or are unsuccessful, then we would defer to the number-two firm, which was Astroturf.
What kind of experience do both of these companies have? And how many fields have they done?
Well, the principals in ProForm Sports have been in it for about 25 years. Astroturf, as you may recall, the first, the first field in Houston way back when was Astroturf. And that's sort of, you know, the generic name, when people see artificial, they think Astroturf. They are a very big firm, and they have very many jobs to do. We felt with the smaller firm, and the commitment and confidence that ProForm Sports was exuding, and the fact that they only have 12 fields right now on the boards, they could jump right into our fields, we felt that that was a better selection. Also, the athletic directors all preferred ProForm Sports after they went and viewed the different fields.
So they went to fields they actually have done?
Yes, yes. They went to Doug Shaw Memorial Stadium, had ProForm Sports, and all three athletic directors, and the football coach, South Brunswick, and the head and assistant football coach from West Brunswick, all, we all traveled down together, and we went to that field. And we met with the maintenance director and the athletic director down there. They had nothing but good to say about the field.
Have we selected the type of fill they're going to be using on top and underneath yet?
We have a good idea of what we want. We want a field that has the impact cushion beneath it. We want a field that has the two layers of artificial turf, one being the blades, the other one being a thatch layer, which is, you know, down, down below the top of the blade, and that has a tendency to keep the rubber fill from flying up. So we do have a pretty good idea of what we want. And we do believe that this firm can give us what we want, within budget, and very close to the schedule.
But how many fields have they done versus the larger company?
Well, Astroturf most likely has done thousands of fields, Chief Miller. This firm is smaller, but the president of this firm used to work for Astroturf until a couple of years ago, and they're coming on, coming on strong.
Warranty-wise, any difference between the two companies on warranty?
No.
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 Any other questions?
Can I make a motion to, to allow staff to go into negotiation with ProForm Sports?
All right, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Lemon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now we have discussion. Dr. Oates, I'll let you.
Well, as you can see, the first item, committee meetings, I wanted to give you an update that goes along with our committee meetings of our situation with our Central Services Building, where we hold our committee meetings. As you know, last Sunday, there was a pipe break in the Central Services Building from the ceiling, and it flooded the entire Central Services Building. And we are currently, and staff is currently displaced, many of staff is currently displaced, working in areas that we can get to, and then we're also using the professional development room at Bolivia Elementary. Right now, we will begin painting, repainting the area, beginning April 15th, according to Ms. Rutledge. The entire carpet, which of course you know was new, has been taken up, and we are also looking at installing new drywall, a few inches up from the floor, which is taking, should take place around April 15th through the 19th as well. So with that said, since we are displaced and we're not scheduled to be back in operation fully until May 6th, we will look to find another location for our committee meetings. And once we have secured a location, we will get that information out to you and to the public. Secondly, I'd like to take the opportunity to announce that we are yet the recipients of yet another North Carolina FAST grant. North Brunswick High School has received a grant in the amount of $16,350, and those funds will be used, of course, to replace a shed that was destroyed in the hurricane. All of these things were destroyed in the hurricane, but they will use funds to replace materials for the horticulture program, to replace lab materials for the AP Biology class, to replace some personal items for teachers, and also to replace the gym tarts that were used in the main gym and the auxiliary gym. So that, those funds, again, are $16,350, and I will be receiving that recognition at the State Board of Education meeting on Thursday at 8:30. So I'll be traveling there and coming back and making sure that North Brunswick is represented as I did with West Brunswick. So again, we continue to encourage all of our schools to apply for these FAST NC grants. The funding is there, and we just simply have to apply, as being one of the harder-hit areas during Hurricane Florence. Lastly, I'd like to commend our Executive Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Antonia Johnson. She applied for and received a grant from Duke Energy Foundation in the amount of $25,000. This grant is to support the summer reading camp, and the funds will be used to support books and other incentives for students and the summer reading camp curriculum materials. She told me that she was going to use this money to add a STEM component to the summer reading camp. She said it's her goal to have a culminating STEM project this summer at each site. So I just wanted to commend Ms. Johnson, who's sitting there in the back for that grant.
All right.
Madam Chair, number three that I asked to be put on the discussion items is board communication with parents and community and fellow board members. Ms. Watkins and I are not in collusion. We've never spoken about this. I just happened to jot down some of my own thoughts to bring up a discussion item tonight about this.
Obviously, one of the tools that has been used for a long time, communication-wise from the board to the community, has been the PAC meeting, and Mr. Tubbs, our former superintendent, chose not to schedule those meetings this year, shutting that tool down.
With that in mind, it's my opinion that we need to review our communications altogether that the board has. The board needs numerous tools and improved tactics to properly accomplish the goal of better communication between the board and parents and the community. The right tools make all the difference. When communication is done well, challenges get faced, questions are answered, and the community's spirit becomes stronger. I suggest that we form a committee, or appoint a committee, to review where we are, what we need, where we need to be, and how to get there, and present those findings to the board. I've gone as far as to actually suggest a committee, which I will volunteer to be on as a board member. I am suggesting a couple of people from the community, Crystal Dameron, because she was to be the PAC president this year, before Mr. Tubbs shut it down, and also Renee with the Southport Pilot, because Renee was a member of the PAC team, as a parent from Southport, but she's also media, so I thought that would be a good combination. Mr. Siemens, I think is an automatic, being our communication person with the school system, and perhaps our Teacher of the Year and our Principal of the Year. And there may be discussion about other members or some other folks being on this committee if you agree with that. So I throw that out as a thought. We've already heard a community member speak to it tonight. That's kind of where I stand with it, so I don't know what you guys, how you feel.
I like that idea. I would like to see maybe a couple more parents involved with that. You know, that's, Crystal was to be the PAC president, but I think we need to get a parent from a southern end of the county, and one from a northern end or something, and that way, we're kind of represented throughout the entire county, because, you know, each area's going to be different. We just went through the redistricting discussion, so let's have a parent from that area.
Jerry, pick that.
So Ms. Dameron is from the middle of the county, I don't know. Renee would be in the south.
And she's a parent. She has kids in school.
I would suggest Ms. Watkins, if she's able to do it from the north end. She's interested in that. And then we'd have to find one person from the west end.
Yeah. I like that idea, though.
So I don't know, I know under discussion, we don't normally make final decisions, but...
Can we wait until we have the final personnel list on who would be on this before we make an approval? Maybe Jerry comes up?
We're just discussing it right now.
Yeah, maybe Jerry comes up with a couple of names, brings it to committee meeting that's coming, and then we can make a, have him present that and...
And then what the goals and the vision of the committee would be?
Yes.
So that we'd have...
And yeah, when they present and so forth, that'd be great.
Okay.
The second item, or whichever number it is, after we added committee meetings, when Ms. Milliken and I went on the board, and now Mr. Benton, the committee meetings, as I used to know the board, didn't exist. So I don't know when it was started, where it came from, or any of that. Don't even know why we do it, to be honest with you. But my personal opinion about committee meetings are not necessarily positive, because when you are working on a committee, only two board members are required to be there. So when there's an important discussion going on related to an issue that committee's working on, the rest of the board doesn't hear it. So a good example of how that can work to the negative, because Mr. Miller's schedule, given the day, he could be anywhere doing anything all day long and not get there. That is exactly what happened today, we discussed, talking about redistricting in a meeting, so he was unable to be there. That's a real disadvantage to make that decision, because we can make a decision with a quorum with three board members to move forward on something. So I think that's a negative. Number two about that is, since attendance from parents and the media and all that is really tough, because they started out when I first got on the board at 8:30. We adjusted it to the afternoon, trying to adjust for board members' work schedules, because at that time, we had three members who had full-time jobs, and we've changed the time to 3:00. Even at that, we have problems of people being there, because it's early in the day and people work. So to me, that's another negative, because we're still dealing with items that are important to the boys and girls of the county, and we don't have a full board there. And it's, the parents, it's inconvenient for them to attend, because it's during the day, even the media at times has problems being there for the same reason. So to me, that's another negative. My preference is, and you, Ms. Cook and Mr. Miller have been here, and you may have been here when it started differently or it was implemented, that we can do the things that we need to do in the regular board meeting. Then if there are special needs, Ms. Cook and Dr. Oates could call a special meeting or an emergency meeting for those types of situations, that we need to be discussing more in the meetings tonight than we have been. And I know Mr. Miller made a comment when he was chairman not long ago to the audience. I guarantee you, we have discussed these consent items. So I know you felt pressure about the public not knowing what we were voting on. So I know you felt pressure about the public not knowing what we were voting on.
Well, I, I think anytime we're discussing spending lots of money, which we do, um, anytime we're looking at changing the lives of our students' schedules or, uh, you know, not just the budget amendments or, you know, just the everyday things, I, I think it should be in this setting. Um, you know, it's televised, we don't have a big, um, response from that, the last time we checked the numbers, but I think we need to make it where parents can attend. We want this room full. We want parents involved in it. I mean, we're making decisions about your children, so, and we don't take that lightly. Like you said, I missed the committee meeting and, and I apologize, I have a full-time job, but, um, I wasn't ready for that. I mean, I hadn't heard all the discussion.
Well, um, since we're just discussing, my preference is beginning in June to do away with them altogether. And then if we have to meet for something dire, that meeting can be called. That this meeting will be longer, obviously, uh, but again, uh, I think we need to be, uh, more out front about what's going on. And it's not that we weren't advertising those meetings and all that kind of thing and following standard procedures, it's just the inconvenience, the whole thing and the way it's set up, I, I just don't personally like it, so. So if you may have some background on how we got there, I don't know.
It used to be an all-day event. It'd start in the morning and end at five o'clock, all day.
We have a 10 o'clock rule to shut this building down at 10 o'clock at night. This is, is from a former board member, so.
But, you know, I, I don't know how many counties do two board meetings a month. I don't know if that's something we would ever need to go to, but, um, you know, I'm willing to do anything to be as transparent as we can.
Well, in light of what Mr. Lemon and Mr. Miller have stated, I wholeheartedly agree with that. We need, again, to have more parents present because your children are our future and you need to have a voice in that and we need to know what that voice is. Are we always gonna be able to meet your need? No, because we have almost 13,000 students in this county that we have to consider, but we are going to make the best decision possible, given the circumstances at the time. So I would be in agreement with the two gentlemen that we do go to one full board meeting per month.
So the, um, next item that I jotted down for discussion is the issue of redistricting schools and, um, always, redistricting is a four-letter word, no matter what school district does it. However, um, when the staff have, has full-time jobs and everybody here, the entire staff has a full-time job, to add this redistricting situation, which is something we have to do, obviously, um, to that, I think then we are dealing with maybe not the best performance. So, uh, Dr. Oates, I would suggest if you have not, that we look into a firm to work with us in that respect and that the whole format be boom, 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 so everybody knows what's coming up next, when, what. Perfectly lined up, because it's my personal opinion, to open a middle school next year, we need to have all of this in line by January of 2020 anyway. So that means we need to get to work. You know, you may have a comment about, uh...
I agree, at the, at the very latest of January, because we're looking at also, um, bringing on an administrator, administrative, planning for administration at the new school. It gives parents ample time, I believe, if we could have those decisions made, um, for any adjustments that be made for those that are going to the new middle school. So I'm all in favor of getting that done as soon as possible and the, and the possibility of using an outside firm to do that would be beneficial to us all because they are the ones that would have that expertise in, um, performing these types of, these types of actions for school systems. Not discounting any of the work that my staff has done or they will do, but, um, I will be the first to tell you, I'm an, I'm an educator. I'm not one for geographic planning and those types of things and there are people that we can contract with to, to do those tasks for us, so I, I fully support that.
Well, I, I don't like to spend money when we don't need to, but I think this is a situation where we need to do that. Uh, we need to do it right and, um, is it possible that the next board meeting, we can have, uh, you, you guys can talk to firms and, and bring somebody forward that we can have an open discussion with?
I think we can get to work on that.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
And I like that too, because, I mean, the first year I was on the board, I think Freya was at '06, um, they had just done a demographic study and showed us where things needed to be, so, um, I like that. And they got community input, they talked to parents, they talked to businesses, they talked to developers and, um, I think it's a good thing to do. And also, I'd like to say one thing too, is our communication with our county commissioners is great. We have a great relationship with our county commissioners and we are talking to our county commissioners individually. So when the discussion, when it gets time and we have this study, then we'll all come to the table and discuss where to build a new school, how, you know, one or two or three of them or where, where it needs to be and, um, I look forward to having those discussions.
And I think in the communication side of what we discussed, uh, we're not fully taking advantage of the social media that's out there that we can use and do more things information-wise, um, through social media and Mr. Siemens orchestrating that. And we'll get back to that with a committee, but...
Thank you.
I think we just failed to inform the folks out here that with HB 13, our classroom sizes drop significantly. I mean, we're, it's 980 projected, I think in three years of Bell, four years of Belleville's gonna max out and then it'll kind of sit there and I, we're gonna drop to 708 is the number for it. So we have two years, I think it's 724 next, the year after next, so we have to, that number drops awful fast, probably faster, almost than we can build if we don't have a pretty quick timeline on this to get it done.
You know, you're right. And, you know, I talked to a developer, um, last week and 400 homes between Mallory Creek and, um, Brunswick Forest, there's another 200 acres gonna be developed, 700 apartments, 72 townhomes. I mean, Leland is just blowing up, so unbelievable. When I first started there as a deputy, it was a Scotchman and a McDonald's. Everything we would. It's crazy, crazy.
Well, I'm just gonna recap, if I can, somehow, short and succinctly. Um, the committee meetings, just, just my background on the committee meetings, when we, when I first came on the board 10 years ago, we had a different day for each committee. So we had policy one day, we had curriculum one day, we had another one another day. And so people would, you know, and at the time, one or two people came, um, then it kind of merged into having it on the same day and one or two members, cause each committee has a, a chair and a, and a, a second in case somebody's not there and another alternate. So it kind of started off as that and then it kind of merged where people would come and we would have a quorum. So sometimes if things were of an urgent matter, like a financial matter where something had to be, you know, was, it was kind of urgent, um, then we were able to go ahead and vote on that. And ideally, a lot of people that come to committee meetings, uh, are from outside of the community and they may come just to share about a program they want to get into the school or something like that. So sometimes it might not be convenient for them to come at a night meeting and that's, you know, there's different, there's different, um, categories of things, I guess. Uh, you know, sometimes we have people come from, like the Astroturf people or somebody would come from out of town and, you know, just depending on the schedules. I don't have any problems with, you know, anybody coming, it just will make for a much longer meeting if we, you know, do all that. Um, and also, a lot of times, if there's the difference between putting something on an action item, which is where tonight we discussed the item, uh, where it's a consent item, it's something that we've already looked at as a board, we, we agree on it, we approve it and we don't feel like, we feel like all of us have had enough information to go ahead and approve that without having discussion at the meeting. So that's what it means when it says consent item on your agenda, just for general knowledge, cause we had to have Mrs. Dixon explain her transformative, I probably already got it wrong. Anyway, um, so just to kind of give you a background on what the purpose of the committee meetings, to my understanding, is so that we can, you know, get the information. Also, if the information, if the board member's not there, they have a packet of information and they have that and they have time, hopefully, to peruse that information before the board meeting, so they will be knowledgeable of it. And if there's any questions they have, then they can ask the staff in between those times so that they are more up to speed on things. So, you know, there's certainly different, different ways that we might need to incorporate or change, but I'm certainly for making it as seamless and as, um, transparent as possible. Um, you know, I am personally available anytime and, you know, just like all the board members, um, you know, the PAC meetings, I will say, the PAC meetings and under general statute, it's not required to have a county PAC meeting, it's, it's permissible or you, you may have a county PAC meeting, but each school has their own PAC. And the whole purpose behind the PAC meetings is for each school to discuss their certain issues that they have. If there's something they feel like is out of their arena to fix, then that's when they can report it to the central office, to the superintendent. And if there's something that the central office or the superintendent can take care of, then we will do that. And so that really, the whole purpose of the PAC meeting was, it's, it's really focused on each individual school. So the information that was being disseminated at the countywide, it's kind of hard to say what, you know, if you have a particular school issue, ideally, the minutes were supposed to have been forwarded to the superintendent of what happened at the PAC meetings from each school. I don't know that that ever happened, ever.
It did when I was principal.
Okay, well, this is...
It did when I was a principal.
Let me put it like this, I never saw any minutes from any local PACs at, now, not to say that they, I mean, they, they could have been, but if you can't, if you don't know what the issues are, you can't set an agenda. So the county PAC was kind of, you know, like, okay, well, what are we gonna do? Because we don't have any information from the schools. And so it's ideally to, to make things easier for, at the school, for you at the school level. But certainly, if you have an issue at your school level and you need help, we're here. So, um, but just, you know, we certainly are all about communicating. I mean, you know, I've got children in school still myself and I'm always constantly communicating with the teachers, the principals and everybody to know what's going on and my wonderful counselor, my child is sitting out here in the audience, so she knows. It's, it takes, it takes a lot of communication. I'm just one parent and I can tell you, between just, just my one child that's, that's in school right now, uh, it's a lot, it's a lot of work for the people out there and I appreciate everything that everybody does. So we will certainly look at the committee meetings, we'll look at the board meetings, we'll look at the redistricting and, um, and we'll, we'll make it right. And if you have any suggestions, you can, and, and I'd say the website, I know Mr. Siemens is constantly working on the website and there is information on there. So, you know, maybe we need to go to the schools and teach the parents how to maneuver the website. I'm not really good with it. I mean, Ms. Dixon is probably shaking her head going, yes, we know that. But anyway, there's a lot of information out there if you just know where to get it. And maybe that's probably also a frustration with some parents, they don't know where to get the information they need. So we'll do everything we can to, to make it smooth for everybody.
All right? And with that, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Benton, second? Do I have a second? Uh, Mr. Lemon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So.